Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August Commissioner's meeting, August 8th, 2016. Prior to this meeting, we met in an executive session to discuss a legal matter and real estate matters. If everyone would please stand, we're going to take a... Oh, excuse me. Well, they're up now. Now, they're going to sit down all... We're going to take roll call first. Mr. Secretary, my apologies.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Oliva?
Here.
And Mr. Connell?
Here. We're going to take a moment of silence. We don't have a Benedictor tonight, and then afterwards, Deputy Chief will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Please take a moment to reflect upon yourselves. Thank you. Deputy Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. First item on the agenda is this evening, we're very proud as a board to give out this proclamation to one of our own. If Mr. Commissioner Lewis would please head on up to the podium, and would the Holmes
I just want to introduce Jack Holmes. Jack was supposed to be a sophomore this fall at the University of Pittsburgh, but instead, last year, he decided to defer his admission to the University of Pittsburgh and instead decided to do some community service. And he did that through AmeriCorps. And I think we all know about AmeriCorps and the wonderful things they do and the mission they have to help those that are disadvantaged, those that need help, those that are in trouble. And Jack has dedicated the past year of his life to community service, which is certainly commendable. And we wanted to acknowledge, this board wanted to acknowledge that, and I'm here with Chris Connell, the President, and I'd like to read this proclamation into the record if I could. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Harford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, wishes to recognize notable achievements made by young adults in our community. And whereas the Board would like to congratulate John "Jack" Holmes III, who has spent the last year serving in AmeriCorps, participants receive a small living allowance, lodging and meals, and a Siegel Education Award. And whereas the decision to defer his matriculation to the University of Pittsburgh for one year while serving with AmeriCorps ultimately set Jack down an exciting path filled with new places, new people, and new experiences. And whereas having grown up in Pennsylvania, Jack wanted to see more of the country, and he chose to give back to people, helping those less fortunate. And whereas working alongside other young adults in the Alpine II Team, in addition to the staff from Habitat for Humanity, the project sponsor, and volunteer, local volunteers, Jack spent November and December building two homes for needy families in the rural town of Divide, Colorado, five days a week, eight hours a day. And whereas after a brief time home for Christmas, Jack and the members of the Alpine VII Team spent the first six months of 2016 working in Texas on flood relief, income tax preparation, and veteran services, logging over 1,700 hours of service. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Harford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, wish John "Jack" Holmes III the best of luck at the University of Pittsburgh in the fall and in all his future endeavors. Proclaim this eighth day of August 2016, the Township of Harford Board of Commissioners, signed by Chris Connell, President, Mary Oliva, and the entire Board. Jack, just want to congratulate and thank you for your service. You've set an example for all of us to follow. You certainly made the community proud, and I know that your parents, Commissioner Holmes and your mother, Priscilla, certainly are proud as well, so congratulations. If you feel indulged, you're a proud dad. My son authorized me to speak on his behalf, and I'm just going to say two things.
I have data clock.
Yeah. I want to repeat the AmeriCorps pledge for everybody to understand what it is that these fine young men and women committed to do and indeed performed. The AmeriCorps member pledge, I will get things done for America to make our people safer, smarter, and healthier. I will bring Americans together to strengthen our communities. Faced with apathy, I will take action. Faced with conflict, I will seek common ground. Faced with adversity, I will persevere. I will carry this commitment with me this year and beyond. I am an AmeriCorps member, and I will get things done. Jack was a member of the 22nd class of AmeriCorps. AmeriCorps was started by President Clinton, is continued by President Bush and President Obama, and I just want to let you know some of the things that these folks accomplished. In nine states, just his group, did 150 projects, and that included removing 400 tons of debris or trash from different areas, assisting 3,000 veterans, planting 32,000 new trees, constructing 19 homes, serving 18,000 meals, building or restoring 55 miles of trails. They suppressed or contained 1,800 acres of fires. 2,400 volunteers were recruited or coordinated by the NCCC members, and through the tax work, in particular the Jack did, over $7 million was returned alone from taxpayers who did not know they were entitled to tax refunds or tax credits. I'm proud of our country for having this program, and I'm obviously very proud of my son, our son, for having volunteered to do this. So, thank you, Jack, for setting an example for all of us. I asked the Commissioner Holmes if this was his token Republican in the family.
[Laughter]
Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Oh, you already showed it. I'll do it again. Good job. Glad you be proud, Larry. You don't have your father's traits, you talk.
Yeah, that's right.
I guess it comes with time.
[Laughter]
Oh, so you know.
He learns what not to do.
That's right.
I just, I want to thank my colleagues on the Board for that. That was, I appreciate that, the fuss that was made and the, I can't say enough about how extraordinary this program is, and I encourage, it's open to everybody from age 18 to 24, any high school seniors that are out there who are, you know, aren't exactly sure if they're, you know, if they're ready for college, this is an extraordinary program. If you are in college and you want to take a year between college and what you want to do for the rest of your life, AmeriCorps just does such extraordinary things, and it has such a profound effect on its members. So, thank you again, all.
Congratulations again. Yep. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Zlatnik, if we could have the Township Auditor update, please.
Good evening. I reviewed the disbursement report for the period commencing by the 12th and ending August 8th. I asked our Township Finance Director by email to elaborate on descriptions of certain expenditures. All of my questions were answered to my satisfaction, therefore, in my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zlatnik. And item number four, Citizens Forum. This evening, we have one speaker, and Dr. Levin?
Thank you, Mr. Connell, and thank you, Commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to discuss Harwood Square in relationship to the two major acts in this country. I appreciated hearing from the Township Auditor, I barely had time to change my glasses as usual. However, I noted today that the Commissioners' meeting online consisted of quite a number of pages, which were all quite explanatory. I hope this wasn't a mistake, it's a very good idea, to look at all of the finances, presumably for a period of about six months, although I'm not sure about that from my initial reading. Perhaps that could be elaborated on afterwards. In addition, the minutes of the previous meeting were posted as well. I think this is a very fine thing for you to do, because, after all, these meetings belong to the citizens of Harford Township as a whole. You know my interest in Harwood Square, which is probably the most polluted site, the contaminated site in Harford Town. I wanted to discuss with you briefly how this fits in with the two major acts in this country, the National Environmental Policy Act, at which all of you have rights to, fulfilling responsibilities, assuring Americans, attaining the widest range of beneficial uses, assure all safe, helpful, productive measures are taken, achieving a balance between population and resource use, enhancing the quality of renewable resources. Everyone knows about this. This has been in effect since 1969. As a result, we've all grown up with it, and we all expect it. Similarly, Jillian Rufo, Jean Wazorek, and David Freed expected this also, when measures were taken to commence construction on a contaminated site, releasing the, releasing the dangerous substances and water into the air, which continues to occur. The developer didn't have a plan to develop that site. This does not fall under the Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act of 1980, the Superfund, known as the Superfund Program, which Harford was very quick to jump on as far as the chewing gum factory and national wood preserves. It was noted as the 542 site on the Superfund list. EPA has a responsibility for this. EPA has a responsibility if asked. They were asked to step in for the Superfund site, national wood preserves, and the chewing gum factory, which was similarly affected, and they did, and they invested some $25 million and counting within that project, and the state to this day is exercising their responsibility to pay for $200,000 a year. This has been going on for nearly 30 years now. Insofar as the present site of Harwood VII, the developer had no plans. He moved into that site, dug out a hole, and started erecting houses, which he's doing to this day. Some soils, probably contaminated from the site, are being removed, others are just simply remaining in place. So a legacy is being left for future generations, or for a generation that becomes living there and as a result digs a hole, and this is what they get. They get more contamination. Now, who pays for this contamination? EPA has sworn off the fact that it is probably not associated with the Superfund site. On the other hand, there were companies that served at this site, and the nature of the release from liability that was given to at least one of them is that they would be responsible for any further cleanup that would be necessary. So consequently, I expect that they are, they are working somehow with the developer to take further steps. And this is something where an intercession can be made that would indicate whether they are doing the right thing and whether they are protecting the rights of the citizens that live nearby. So there's absolutely no question that this falls into the National Environmental Policy Act provisions, and it may, in fact, fall under some of the provisions of the Comprehensive Environmental Responsibility and Liability Compensation and Liability Act. There is also a possibility there, because EPA did prepare a report on this site, and I think all efforts are being made to obtain that document. So, what I am finally going to say to you is that it is extremely important to have a plan of attack to develop one site which is known to be contaminated, and this was known to be contaminated for a long time. The fault in this case, as I pointed out previously, lies right in this township. No senior official, representative, or state legislature can step in at this one. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
This next portion of Citizens Forum will be on anybody that wishes to come up and speak for three minutes on agenda items. Anybody on this side of the room? Anyone on this side of the room? And for the record, we're going to need...
You need my name and address, right?
Yes, please, yep. Even though we know you, we still need your name and address.
That's what I was just finishing your sentence with. I'm Ed Davis, 212 East Manola Road. It pertains to the Skateboard Park and the accessibility to it. I don't know if there's anything provisions have been set forth, but going down there, down Glendale, Glendale Road, sidewalks only go so far. When you get to the entrance, the sidewalk is no longer there. It is, depending on the hour you go, we're starting to get a little darker, it's not well lit. I was wondering if we can get some lighting going in down the driveway. As for crossing Glendale Road, it's a little hazardous. I've seen over in Suburban Square, I don't know if any of you have noticed, on Lancaster Ave, when you want to cross, you hit a button, you get some yellow flashing lights. Being that Glendale Road is one of our speed enforcement roads, maybe that will help for kids to cross. So, if that's going to be our skate park, I'd like to see if we can maybe just make it a little more accessible safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Anybody else on this side of the room? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Levin. Thank you very much for your comments and the update as far as us goes, where it goes on our side.
No, the Township has no other updates relating to the project.
Now, you handed out two forms, Dr. Levin. Was, the one was the National Environment Policy, and the other one, what was the other one? A financial statement that you, did you hand out?
I handed out a financial statement. I handed out the procedure that the Department of Environmental Protection is taking to either approve or monitor the many sites individually.
Okay.
This is a watered-down version.
I was looking, I was looking for that, I was looking for that second one then. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Davis, with the Ninth Ward Commissioner and also with Recreation, we will look into your requests for lighting. Mr. Wexler, any comment for that?
Yeah, we've, we've had several complaints about crossing for people to access Murray Place, the dog walk, and the path down there. So we're looking at it. We have to work with the state, though, because it's a state highway. So we do do some enforcement, our police department's there, but we, we have to get approval from the state to do a crosswalk. We'd like to see a crosswalk, some type of notification there to cross for people to walk their dogs at Murray, to access the path at Murray Place, to egress back out, and now also to access there. We do have some park improvement money set aside for this year to improve the skate park, and Mr. Gentile and the Recreation Director are taking care of that piece. So I think we're in, we're in the right direction, and I think those safety measures along with the state and our police department, working with the state PND to get those enforced or put in, get approval to put them in will help. It's just a bad, bad street to walk, it's a bad street to cross. We know that, so, but thank you for your comments.
Yep, there's certainly, especially with the crosslights, they are very difficult to come by. But thank you very much, and I also reckon, I'm sorry.
Now, I just want to ask Mario, does the Skate Park Committee still come to the Park and Recreation Boards? Because maybe Ed could come to those meetings.
Yeah, you know, we have not had them. They, they did come a couple of times when we were working through where the skate park was going to be, but since then, we haven't had them. But you're welcome to come to the Park and Rec Board. The Park and Rec Board makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, so you may want to, want to go there, too.
Do you know when the next meeting is?
Yes, it's always the fourth Tuesday of the month, so.
I agree.
All right. All right, and thank you again, and I'll also point out that Mr. Davis is also one of our volunteer firefighters, and thank you for serving the community. All right, next on the, you know what, actually, Commissioner Oliva, you have HPED, you wanted to address the situation here, if you have the floor.
Okay. Commissioner?
So, over, over the past few months, our group has gotten together, the Economic Development Committee of the Board of Commissioners, which is Bill Wexler, Larry Holmes, myself, and the Chair is Andy Lewis. I also am the liaison to the Board of Commissioners to the Harford Partnership for Economic Development. And so, we asked the Harford Partnership for Economic Development to put together some, to give us some, some of their, some of the ideas for improving, for business development in the township, as well as for some beautification in the township. They gave us their recommendations, they put together a document, we worked together with them, and together we produced this document with, with the Board, the Economic Development Committee, and the Harford Partnership Economic Development together. We put this document together, and now we would like, we're going to give a presentation. Brendan Goggan is going to come up, he's the President of the HPED, and he's going to give us a little overview of this document. And now, I've given everyone a copy of this document for review, and we'll be voting on this, for this, for these recommendations. We'll be discussing it later in the, in New Business. At the end of the meeting, we'll be discussing this. So if you have any questions, please ask Brendan, Jean, myself, Andy, anyone else. Okay?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Commissioners. I'd be surmised to be so impressed that the full Board is here on August 8th. Doesn't everyone know everyone's down the shore right now? I'm impressed, and I can only say that some of you have better tans than others, probably Larry and Mario are the best so far. But anyway, I am pleased to be here tonight. In my role as President of the Harford Partnership for Economic Development, I am flanked by my Vice President, Don Kelly, and Board Member, Jean Angel, who will assist me and answer any questions or concerns the Board might have concerning our proposal. Our Board is comprised of business owners, residents, commercial property owners, and township representatives, with a wealth of experience in nonprofit management, grant writing, strategic planning, township volunteerism, and main street management. I'd like to thank Commissioner Mary Oliva, who serves on our Board as our liaison, as you mentioned, to the Economic Development Committee, otherwise referred to as the EDC. We'd also like to thank the involvement and commitment of your fellow Commissioners that serve on the EDC, Larry Holmes, Bill Wexler, and Chairman Andy Lewis. The Economic Development Committee requested the HPED to develop plans and a budget for business district improvement efforts. Our proposal represents a culmination of a collaborative effort with the EDC, and I am personally very pleased with the results of our joint efforts. Over the course of this year, we have been working with the Board of Commissioners and the Economic Development Committee to come up with a strategy and a list of projects with a particular focus on beautification and business attraction. You should have an outline of our strategy before you now, which includes funds for both projects and staffing. We have a number of beautification projects shovel-ready in the works for this fall. One major project would enhance the gateway to the township along Darby Road, leading into our new township building. As the township prioritizes economic development and our list of projects and goals grows, it is time to solidify our public-private partnership and have a professional employee dedicated to manage these and other activities. The Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development controls many of the grants and programs our community will be taking advantage of, or excuse me, could be taking advantage of. For priority funding, DCED requires communities to have a paid professional staff person, preferably full-time. We hope eventually be at that point. For now, we are proposing that our current Board Member, Jean Angel, who has been putting a lot of volunteer hours with landscaping, beautification projects in the districts, which I'm sure many of you have seen on Darby Road and over by Edgewood, Edgemont, I should say, some of the great projects that have happened.
Edgewood.
Oh, Edgewood, excuse me, I apologize. To be hired as a part-time staff consultant for the HPED. The responsibilities in the packet that you have include the following topics, I'm just going to go over them briefly and answer any questions later. Design, streetscape enhancements, promotion and marketing, business retention and recruitment, organization, fundraising, print and design costs, managing, management of the various beautification projects, business district beautification in itself, and organizational work. We have been fortunate to have the help of some great interns from Harford College to help us in our planning, projects, and data collection over the years. This last summer, the summer we're in right now, our intern gathered a lot of demographic and business inventory data, making it possible to have a one-stop-stop online information source for businesses interested in opening shop here in Harford Township. Some of our long-term goals involve providing each Commissioner tools for the various business districts they represent, in which prospective businesses could use, online or in hard copy, to engage the township and its representatives in deciding to open their businesses here. Now, at this point, I just want to leave it open for questions that you might have on the proposal that you have. Jean and Don and I will do our best to answer any of those concerns or questions, but we wanted to open up to the Board, and thank you for your time.
One thing I did want to add, that this, this was, it's already budgeted, it was budgeted in the 2016 budget, so I just wanted to... Any other que, any questions? Okay, we'll have discussion in, in New Business, so we can go over...
Thank you.
Thanks, so thank you, Brendan.
Thank you very much.
So you want to stay until the end?
We can stick around.
Yeah. We'll send someone over to get you, yeah.
Thank you. Can we move over to seat there, bud?
More comfortable.
The responsibilities in the packet that you have include the following topics. I'm just going to go over them briefly and answer any questions later. Design, streetscape enhancements, promotion and marketing, business retention and recruitment, organization, fundraising, print and design costs, managing, management of the various beautification projects, business district beautification in itself and organizational work. We have been fortunate to have the help of some great interns from Haverford College to help us in our planning, projects and data collection over the years. This last summer, the summer we're in right now, our intern gathered a lot of demographic and business inventory data, making it possible to have a one-stop, stop online information source for businesses interested in opening shop here in Haverford Township. Some of our long-term goals involve providing each Commissioner tools for the various business districts they represent, in which prospective businesses could use, online or in hard copy, to engage the township and its representatives in deciding to open their businesses here. Now, at this point, I just want to leave it open for questions that you might have on the proposal that you have. Gene and Don and I will do our best to answer any of those concerns or questions, but we wanted to open up to the board and thank you for your time.
One thing I did want to add that this was, it's already budgeted, was budgeted in the 2016 budget, so I just wanted to. Any other questions? Okay, we'll have discussion in New Business, so we can go over.
Thank you.
So, thank you Brendan.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You want to stay until the end?
Stick around.
We can stick around.
We'll send someone over to get you.
Thank you. Can we move over to seat there, bud?
More comfortable.
All right, one minute please.
Thank you, Chris.
Next on the agenda will be the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. D'Amelio.
I would like to make a motion to approve the, I just lost it, sorry. I got it. Regular meeting minutes of July 11, 2016.
Second.
And who seconded that?
Kevin.
I'm sorry, Mr. McCloskey. Sorry about that.
Mr. McCloskey, okay.
Kevin's my name.
Questions or concerns? Take the roll, please.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Yes. Approval of the warrants, Finance Committee?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number eight of 2016 totaling $2,774,730.95, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for July 14, 2016, in the amount of $639,865.33. The general and sewer fund payroll for July 28, 2016, in the amount of $663,742.33. General fund dispersments, number eight of 2016, in the amount of $912,815.78. Sewer fund dispersments, number eight of 2016, in the amount of $190,233.40. Community development block grant fund dispersment, number eight of 2016, in the amount of $46,629.83. Home grant fund, number eight of 2016, in the amount of $3,211.25. Capital project fund dispersment, number eight of 2016, in the amount of $301,337.55. The credit card statement ending July 27 of 2016, in the amount of $16,895.48.
Seconded by?
Second.
Mr. McCloskey?
Mr. President, as we have heard from our township auditor, he has reviewed the warrants. Any warrants that raised questions for him, he raised those questions with our township staff and our Finance Director and his questions were answered to his satisfaction, leading to his recommending that we approve these warrants. I accept his recommendation and recommend to the rest of you that we approve warrant number eight of 2016.
Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Secretary, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. On item number seven, I just want to point out that Mr. Richter, our bond counsel's here this evening as well as Mr. Schlesinger from PFM. Will we go into any questions? If anyone does have a question, it's our Finance Director. She could just be recognized first.
Right. After I read this 20-minute title, I'll call Mr. Richter to the podium.
Very good.
And he could give us a quick thing.
Commissioner Holmes, if you would, please.
Happy to, Mr. President. I move we adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-14 of 2016, authorizing the incurrent, sorry, the incurring of non-electoral debt by Haverford Township to finance the cost of certain capital projects of the township, providing for the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12,500,000. Appointing a paying agent in sinking fund depository and authorizing a paying agency agreement, setting forth provisions regarding the denomination's maturities, rates of interest and terms of redemption for the bonds and authorizing a book entry-only system therefore, providing for the registration, transfer and exchange of the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds by private sale upon invitation and authorizing the acceptance of a bond purchase proposal, authorizing the execution and delivery of the bonds, covenenting to budget and pay debt service on the bonds and pledging the full faith credit and taxing power of the township for the payment thereof, establishing a sinking fund for the bonds, establishing a construction fund and a rebate fund, making certain covenants regarding federal income tax matters, authorizing the preparation and filing of a debt statement, borrowing base certificate, debt exclusion proceedings and a transcript of the proceedings for the issuance of the bonds, providing for the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds, providing for the form of the bonds, authorizing a preliminary and final official statement for the bonds, authorizing a financial guarantee insurance policy and making certain agreements with the issuer of such policy. Providing that the local government unit debt act shall apply to the bonds, providing that this ordinance shall be a contract with the holders of the bonds, authorizing certain additional actions including the execution of a tax compliance agreement and a continuing disclosure agreement of the township, repealing inconsistent ordinances and setting forth the effective date hereof.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler.
I invite my, our bond counsel, Bill Richter, to the podium if he could give us a quick overview and then answer any questions any of my colleagues may have.
I just have a quick question at the beginning here. Is this ordinance, P-14-2016?
It is.
Yes.
For some reason, I have 278820. Is that wrong?
P was the first reading. It was a clever.
What number did you have?
I had 2788. What I put on here, I'll change it if you need.
That is correct, okay.
788, okay. I'll answer any questions you have about this. This is a bond ordinance. It's prepared in accordance with the requirements of the Pennsylvania Local Government Unit Debt Act, which is the state statute that governs the incurrence of debt by municipalities such as the township. It's very similar to the last two that I did for you. It authorizes debt up to 12 and a half million dollars, subject to certain parameters. My understanding is that the township intends to issue less than 10 million of that 12 and a half. The whole subject of a parameters not to exceed resolution, I think, is already discussed by the Board, but I'm happy to. This ordinance authorizes bonds to be sold by negotiated sale or an invited sale. I believe the township actually intends to sell the bonds by an invited sale, which is a form of competitive sale. An internet, basically, it's an internet sale of the bonds. So, good that this is the cheapest, most efficient way to sell general obligation bonds.
Mr. Richter, I understand we've done that for like, for the last two bond issues, haven't we?
It's common.
And have had a very good experience associated with that, with that competitive sale.
Right.
And is the sale taking place tomorrow?
The sale could take place tomorrow, yes. If the Board approves this ordinance, if your financial advisor deems it prudent to proceed right away, which I think he probably does, it's done tomorrow.
What will be the interest rate?
That I'll let Mr. Schlesinger answer. I don't know.
We expect the average rate to be somewhere between 2.6 and 2.75 percent.
It's a 30-year, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, you just said, you just said all-in very quietly under your breath, so you could have a range of rates, but that also, those rates are, they may be nominal rates, but you may sell the bonds at a premium or sell the bonds at a discount, so you have an actual, an actual rate that you say will range between, what was it again?
Between 2.6 and 2.75 percent for 30 years. So, it'll be fixed for those term.
And if residents wanted to participate, how would they, where would they go to buy on the internet?
Yeah, the internet auction is, it's a, you have to be assigned in if you're a bidder. We as a financial advisor, the township, could observe it on the auction. I believe Amy and Larry are going to be able to watch it at their computers. Generally speaking, that's who usually watches it, but certainly, that's who joins the auction.
Do you mean buying the bonds or watching?
Oh, I'm sorry, watching the auction.
Buying the bonds, yeah.
Yeah, ultimately, there'll be a bond underwriter that'll be selected through the competitive process. I don't know who that'll be at this point.
That could be, and it'll be determined tomorrow and then they'll be available tomorrow as well.
Exactly. Yeah, then we'll be, we'll settle in about a month from now, so conceivably if, you know, Benny and Scotty or Jenny Montgomery Scott or whoever is the lowest bidder, they'll ultimately be the ultimate winner of that sale.
Yeah, okay. It's a good way to do it. Yeah, that's, we've made that move, what, about four years ago, five years ago, the first time we went with the competitive sale and it's been wildly successful. And I suspect we were out ahead of some of our colleagues in other townships, but now most municipalities are doing it this way.
Many of them, especially with the credit rating that the township has. These are, you know, very fungible to sell to people, so it's easy to use your good credit rating.
Mr. Lewis, the last time you were on this board, we didn't enjoy the same credit rating as we do now, but through the work of Mr. Schlesinger's outfit and, and through Mr. Richter's work, we really had an extraordinary.
Good stewardship of our township, manager and staff.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Are there any further questions?
Before we call the roll, what's the total amount of the bonds we borrowed so the taxpayers understand that? And do we know not only the total, but what about legal fees and any other related costs at this point? Do we know? Am I putting you in the spot today? I'm sorry. I apologize. Do you have an idea?
Mrs. Cuthbertson will come up to the podium.
Hi. Hello, everybody. I do not have, I wouldn't even want to guess of it as to fees. I mean, each deal, it's just a figure I don't want to throw out there, but as far as what our other borrowings have been, the 2012 issue was a 9.9 issue, 2013 was a 10 and 2014 was a 9.9. And this is in accordance with that plan that we had set forth when we, the Board established these building projects, that we would do these in increments of 10 so we could capture the lowest interest rates through bank-qualified financing. The 2012 was 10, however, that was.
Thirty million dollars in Oliva's?
Yes, for several different projects, sanitary sewer improvements, storm sewer improvements, the building projects, park improvements.
Out of the 30, approximately 22 million for the building, is that correct?
That's fair, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry being on the spot.
I don't know if every bit of that is new money. Did we do some refinancing out of those?
In 2013, we refunded the Del Valle note, which was five.
Five million, okay.
Right, that was back in 2010, I think we got that out.
I apologize for pointing you in the spot about the fees, but if the next, at the next meeting in September, if you can do that, that would be great.
The only reason why, I've got you didn't bring it up, one of the things that is determined at the time of the sale is the underwriter's discount, which is essentially the largest fee that you're going to have. That is part of the bidding process, so conceivably, the provider of the auction process, so whoever that underwriter is, is going to provide the interest rates and the purchase price. Included in that is their commission, so we don't know exactly what that'll be, but what we do know is the all-in rate determines the winner. So, from that standpoint, that's a major source of the fees that we won't know until tomorrow. There are other costs associated, like us, Bill Richter's firm, getting the rating to be official statement, Q sub members, all the things necessary to complete the financing. Those fees are somewhere in the $80,000 range combined, so we can get to the combined following that.
That's great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll do that.
Mr. Richter?
I'm sorry. A summary of this ordinance was published in the Delaware County Daily Times on July 28th, that act. And if the Board adopts or enacts the ordinance, further publication will be made within the next week announcing that the ordinance has been enacted.
Yeah, it has been enacted, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other steps this Board has to take, Mr. Richter, other than tonight's, other than tonight's vote with regard to these bonds?
For the Board, no. Closing documents need to be executed when the bonds are actually issued, but as far as Board action, this is the definitive act.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Commissioner D'Amelio?
I think I asked this in the, this is not for you, you guys can sit down.
No, thank you, gentlemen.
I think I asked this in the executive session, but I'll ask Amy again. The tax implication for the residents on this bond only will be?
Yes, you did. And using the estimates that we had during the first reading, we had said that if this, the new debt surface was funded entirely through a real estate tax increase, it would equate to approximately 1.88 percent, which for a median household, median assessed household in the $143,000 range, that would be the equivalent of a $21 annual increase. And an average assessed house, which would be about $172,000 in assessment, it would equate to about $25 per year. So, depending on the actual borrowing tomorrow, that we'll find out, it could be a little higher or lower, but that's the estimate we were using.
And to be clear, that doesn't count what the township will need.
Right, that would not be any operational increase for anything.
Operational increases. Thank you, Amy, appreciate it.
There being no further comment or question? Mr. Secretary?
Sure. Mr. D'Amelio?
No.
That was a no, correct?
Yes. No?
Wait, was that a yes or a no?
It was a no on the bond and yes for question.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Too political answer. Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number eight, ordinance number.
I may, just one moment.
Yes?
Mr. President, I just want to thank our professionals and thank our staff for another very seamless and certainly, I think, painless entry back into the, you know, into the, out into the public markets for us to be able to finance these badly needed construction projects and I appreciate, I appreciate your excellent work and, and look forward to the next one.
Mr. Richter and Mr. Schlesinger, thank you very much for coming and being with us tonight, answering those questions. Thank you. May I?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Item number eight, P-162016, Ward Six, I believe this is.
Mr. President, if I could adopt a second reading of ordinance number P-162016 by establishing a traffic restriction on the following highway, in particular, a parking ordinance, special purpose parking ordinance in front of 7-Eleven, George's Lane, Ortmore, PA, I would appreciate it.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McGarrett. And this is the second reading. There being no comment, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number nine, ordinance P-172016 is the first reading for traffic in the second ward and the fifth ward.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Oliva?
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-172016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Special purpose parking sign in front of Seven Waverly. Okay, rescind sticker parking only Buck Lane, North Side from Railroad Avenue to Pamir Road. Establish parking on, parking of vehicles prohibited at all times Buck Lane, North Side from Railroad Avenue to Pamir Road. Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. Comment? Question? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 10, Resolution 20202016, it's the Penn Dot Traffic Signal Eagle and Lawrence Roads, the fourth ward and the seventh ward. Roads, the fourth ward and the seventh ward.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Siegel?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-2016 authorizing the township manager to submit an application for a traffic signal at the intersection of Eagle and Lawrence Road to Penn Dot.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McGarretty. Comment?
Just part of the new, we just let the residents know again?
Yeah.
What's the part of?
These resolutions are essentially formalities that allow the YMCA's improvements on Eagle Road and the traffic signals to proceed. They finally have Penn Dot approval, but we have to give these resolutions acknowledging essentially that the township's responsible for the signals and the improvements, but that it's Penn Dot approval.
These are the new traffic adaptive lights?
Yeah, they'll be...
This is similar to Westchester Pike, Larry, right?
No, these are not traffic adaptive.
Oh, that's an adapter?
This will lay the groundwork that if in the future we can apply for further grants along Eagle Road, that we would have the baseline equipment set up so that they can be, they can be added.
But I believe, and Mr. Penoni may be able to clarify, that this also is having the fiber between the signals so that the signals at Hillcrest and Lawrence, for example, will be coordinated. Yeah, it won't go, I think, Steve, you might be getting a little bit thinking it goes to Westchester Pike, it won't be connected into the Westchester Pike line, not yet.
We're hoping.
Sort of on our future list, but it will connect, directly connect Lawrence Road and the new signal Hillcrest.
Right.
One of the four or five improvements.
So it is a traffic, I'm sorry, traffic adaptive system, it's just not...
Not a traffic adaptive system. It's not the traffic adaptive we made the presentation on with the cameras and everything. It's, it's a directly connected signals that'll coordinate the timings between the two intersections.
Okay, so it's just for those two intersections, okay.
So they'll both be green at the same time, is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, that's kind of oversimplifying it, but they, all signals have timings, and sometimes the timings are supposed, you know, Walnut Street's a perfect example, it's supposed to be coordinated.
Yes.
But being that they're not, when they're, when they're not interconnected, that coordinations can drift, because it's really just basically coming off of a GPS system. Now they're interconnected, so they can't drift apart. So if, whatever, whatever green, red, yellow, red cycle's there, they'll be connecting each other directly. So it'll just be a tighter, it'll be tighter, timings will be tighter, is probably the best way to say it.
And it'll have the fiber optics that's laid that then we can hopefully, in the future, that'll lay like essentially the groundwork to have the track, traffic adaptive put in, because you need those fiber optics between the two lights.
And it's important to note that these, these improvements that are being made are being funded by monies by YMCA.
And they'll put in new signals and reconstruct essentially the intersection of Lawrence and Eagle with new signals, new sidewalks. New handicap ramps, do pet signals, restriping, a little bit of reconfiguration, curb work. That's Lawrence and Eagle. Hillcrest and Eagle's just the interconnect, and then the two intersections up here, which are, I'm jumping to the next resolutions.
Right, yeah.
At Church, that's new handicap ramps and timings, and at the Yawa intersection, that's new timings. But they're all tied together from the YMCA. And this is part of the money that the YMCA agreed to commit, half a million dollars for traffic improvements.
Well, really, why shouldn't they?
Well, they should.
Why shouldn't they?
That's why we put it in place.
Really, why shouldn't they do it?
This was, I mean, that was all part of the...
They're the highest grossing Y in the country. They won't cap their membership. This is not for you, Dave, I know you're sitting down on this one.
Well, I don't think this is really...
No, but I'm just saying, why shouldn't they?
Go ahead.
They created the problem there.
Any further comment or question?
No. Keep my mouth shut.
Take the roll.
Really? I mean...
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 11 is Resolution 2021-2016, and that's the final minor subdivision plan. Mr. Wexler?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-2016, the preliminary final minor subdivision plan for Falcon Signature Homes LLC, also known as The Applicant, for the property located at 1235 Steel Road, Hafford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio Number 22-09-02336-00, has been submitted to permit the subdivision of the existing 21,789 square foot lot to create two lots as follows. Lot number one, 9,750 square feet. Lot number two, 11,495 square feet. The subject property is zoned R4 and is located in the ninth ward. The foresaid plans were prepared by Robert, Herbert E. McComby, Jr., PE, consulting engineers and surveyors, Brumwell, Pennsylvania, dated June 3, 2016, subject to compliance with the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McGarretty. Further comment, questions? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 12, Resolution 2022-2016, and the third ward, going back to the traffic lights.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 2022-2016 authorizing the township manager to submit application for traffic signal at the intersection of Eagle and West Darby Roads to Penn Dot.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarretty.
Mr. President, can we consider all three of these resolutions at once since they're all tied together?
Well, we only have two more to do after this, so we'll do each one.
All right, great.
One by one. Thank you.
Resolution, how about a voice vote as opposed to individuals, since it's not an ordinance?
You know what, we're, we're in the flow right now, so let's, Mr. Secretary, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 14, 2024-2016, and that's at Eagle and East Darby Road in the third ward.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-2016 authorizing the township manager to submit application for traffic signal at the intersection of Eagle Road and Hillcrest Avenue to Penn Dot.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Comment, questions? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 14, 2024-2016, and that's at Eagle and East Darby Road in the third ward.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-2016 authorizing the township manager to submit application for traffic signal at the intersection of Eagle and East Darby Roads.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarretty. Questions or concerns?
I got it.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 15, purchase of 328 Spring Road. Mr. Aliva?
Yeah, a motion to authorize the purchase of 328 Spring Road, partial number 2234489000 to be negotiated by the township manager.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. McGarretty. And this was discussed in the back room on the real estate, yes. Questions?
Yeah, and I was just, if I might amend your motion, Mr. Aliva, just to indicate that to be negotiated by the township manager with parameters that were agreed to by the board in an executive session, appropriately in an executive session, just so it's clear that he has the preauthorization.
Mr. McGarretty?
Do you accept that?
Do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's within the parameters, as discussed in executive session.
Yeah, and as agreed to by the board in executive session. And will only upon the sale thereof, then that will become public information.
No, because it's a real estate matter. We don't have...
Okay, and that amendment has been acknowledged and accepted by Commissioner Aliva and Commissioner McGarretty. Any further question or concern? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Have the votes begun?
Continue.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
What I was going to suggest, Mr. President, if I might, before we finish it, is we just give 30 seconds as to what we're doing there, that this is part of flood relief, this is, you know, the purpose behind this, and that there was, you know, that there's a state grant involved. Because I don't think any of that is confidential.
I'm going to ask Mr. Penoni to please come up and give us an overview, because this deals with a couple of properties and the entire Chatham Glen neighborhood.
That's, that's actually probably a good introduction to it, is, as the board knows, we've had a series of flood events through Chatham Glen area. They're characterized by high-intensity, short-duration storms from a period of, I believe it was 2012 through 2014. Actually, had four events where there was, was what we'll call urban-type flooding and property damage in the Chatham Glen area. We made a series of applications to the state and federal agencies with assistance of our local and frankly, federal politicians, and to install substantive infrastructure through that neighborhood. Multi-million dollar, to concur with that, we also made application in review with some state agencies and some state representatives' guidance to concurrently with that try to acquire property, to take that property out of harm's way for frankly substantive less money than the infrastructure. This property is one of the two properties that we made application on. We received a DCNR grant for $150,000.
15.
$15,000. No secret, right?
115, 115, yeah.
115, I'm sorry. And this, the acquisition of this property along with maybe some future warrants would help to mitigate property damage during those high-intensity, short-duration storms.
Right. And now the, also there, this is for educational facility?
Well, the ultimate use, right, the ultimate use of this property was for demolition of the build, the structure, the re-establishment of the property, and the installation of a stormwater management facility that would, that would be sort of consistent with their EAC's rain garden program of also trying to bring some public awareness to the stormwater management.
Can I add to that?
Absolutely, yeah.
And while I was away last week, I didn't have an opportunity to share with all the board members, but we received approval for two grants, one from Delaware Valley Regional Planning, I'll get more information on it, for rain garden improvements along Darby Road, as well as various other locations throughout the township. This would be an outstanding opportunity for us to use those grant monies to do some rain gardening. So we would actually put some of that grant money towards that project, so that would be a good opportunity for this. In addition, we got a CMAC approval. Dave, help me, CMAC again is quality?
Air quality improvement.
But it's the grant that we put in, we actually did two grants for the traffic adaptive, the link all the way Westchester Pike from, into Marple Township, that traffic adaptive system. We received a $560,000 approval for that grant. However, we also, at the same time, the project cost to do that is $700,000. So the commit, there would be, obviously, the township would have to make up that balance, roughly, I believe, $140,000 roughly around there.
The grant itself required a match. I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't, you couldn't make application for 100%.
And we actually had $300,000 in this bond that we're doing tomorrow to put towards those particular grants, so that would help us. In addition to that, we also, for the same type of goal, to put traffic adaptive along Westchester Pike, we have an Arley grant in. And that grant, if we able to receive that grant, which we, we've been pretty successful, that one, I believe, would be, we would only have to match 10%, roughly. So we're not going to move forward with the CMAC approval, while obviously we'll, we'll kind of make the necessary paperwork, but we're going to hopefully get the Arley grant as well, so.
I want to, I want to thank Mr. Penoni and Mr. Faulkner for the hours and hours of dedication you put into these grants over and over and over again, over the past several years. One is denied, another one goes in. We're talking folders at least four inches, five inches thick, and then we start over again. So thank you very much for your dedication to that. This is a great move forward on addressing stormwater management in a township that, when most of the area was built, we don't, we didn't have the ordinances and the codes set up as we do today. So it's, you don't know how much this means to the people in that community and that neighborhood, and I look forward to moving forward and addressing this absolutely important situation. Anybody else?
Well, you know, Chris, I just want to say that, you know, I know you're, you won't
I know you're still going to have some issues with it, but I, you know, you did a great job too.
The testament to that is that many commissioners before him have tried to take care of this issue, and I received a phone call, as I'm sure some of you have also, about the, from George, who has been suffering in that house for decades now, and, and his thanks, and from his wife also about this. But no, no other commissioner was able to do it, and you were able to put it off.
Well, and I thank you very much, and I thank my colleagues for supporting this issue and moving forward on it, realizing the importance to it. I mean, it takes, it takes a board, it takes a community. It's not one individual person, and I thank everybody that was involved, township manager and Mrs. Whitup. There's Dale and Leach's office, we have Representative Vitale's office, and we have Congressman Mann's office, who were all involved through the process, and hopefully will continue to be involved with us through this process. Thank you once again. We greatly appreciate it. So moving on, let's see, we are, item number 16, agreements and contracts. And that's, I believe, fifth ward for maintenance of sidewalk.
Mr. President, yes, the motion before the board is, is not correct. We're not agreeing to install the sidewalk or make improvements on the College Avenue Bridge. We're simply agreeing to maintain the sidewalk in terms of snow removal and alike. So I'll read the motion as it should read. I move to authorize the township manager enter into a sidewalk maintenance agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Department of Transportation.
Second.
That's seconded by Commissioner Oliva, and we are taking off that last section. Is there any further question or comment? There being none, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Whembs?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 17, I think under Public Works, is the emergency sanitary sewer contract.
Motion to award the emergency sanitary sewer contract to N. Abenizio Contracting Incorporated, Concha Huckin, PA, in the amount of $282,532.50, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Whexler. Comments, questions? Take the roll, please. Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, clarification. Just clarification on this, was it the lowest responsible bid or the only bid we got?
No, we actually, the bids were open while I was on vacation, but we did receive other bids.
Oh, okay, so there's just a typo in the.
No, it's the only bid.
It was the only bid.
Okay.
Still the lowest responsible bid, no bids.
Right, right. You can be the lowest if you are the only one, yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
They were also the highest responsible bid too.
It's all a thing about the glass being half full or half empty, right? Is that what it is? It's slightly less than, Mr. Abenizio was the lowest responsible bid approximately three years ago. We did this, we try to do it every two to three years, and it was, it's actually slightly under that, I believe. The last one was 283 something, so.
Look, we're, obviously, we're dealing with somebody who has been doing this work for us for a long time and has been doing an effective job, and when he has competitors, he seems to manage to be the lowest responsible bidder. When he doesn't have competitors, he gives us numbers that we're very comfortable with. So I'm 100% on board.
Additional? There being none, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Whembs?
Yes.
Mr. Whexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Yes, item number 18, sanitary sewer lining, also under Public Works.
Motion to award the sanitary sewer line, linings to National Water Main Cleaning Company, Kearney, New Jersey, in the amount of $70,632.50, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any comment?
Is this our first time working with these folks?
It's the first time we're working with them, frankly, first time our office is working with them. What we do, Commissioner Holmes, with, once they become the apparent low bidder, we get a set of references from them. Frankly, they're a large national company with a surprisingly large group of references, and we, we didn't check them all, because it gives like 40s, but we spot checked them, and, and everything came back from their references saying that they can do this work.
Great. I mean, it's good to be, you know, given this, you know, getting more and more bids, and obviously, they were the lowest.
Because there was more than one. Anything additional? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Whembs?
Yes.
Mr. Whexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes. Item number 19, this is the continuation of Citizens Forum, and it will be for non-agenda items. Anyone on this side of the room? Anyone on this side of the room? There being none, let's move into new business, item number 20, Mr. Oliva.
Okay, I wanted to, first of all, wanted to begin the discussion on, he proposed giving it to us, I passed it around to everyone, he mailed it, I know Dan didn't get it, sorry about that, Dan. Apologize for that. But if anybody has any questions about the proposal, we have, in the audience, we have Brendan and the others from, from the HPD, as well as, you know, this was what the, what the Economic Development Committee is recommending also, so. Do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, I just want to make a, I guess, a recommendation. If you could look at Westchester Pike coming in from Brumel, that area, yes, it just looks to me, it's incredibly dull.
Okay.
So, at some point, if you could look at that, because it seems to me like a lot of things, and I understand, we've made a lot of improvements, we had HUD money and whatnot, but that area just hasn't been, it's been, you know, not looked at.
We're looking at, at everything here, the projects that are listed here are what, what would be the focus at the, to the end of this year, and then they're going to come with another recommendation, you know, working with the, with our Economic Development Committee for 2017 and a budget for that, so you'll get that later, a few months from now.
The best thing ever happened here was the, was the flowers that Public Works did with the H, that was pretty neat.
Well, just.
I mean, you did it in all the intersections.
I think it's important to note.
There's a $15,000 mural, but.
The township is invested along Westchester Pike, all the plannings that we've done at every intersection, well over $50,000.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that looks nice. I'll talk about it as soon as you come in.
Yeah, that looks nice, it really does. They did a good job on that.
Yeah, they did.
Can't we go to plastic?
No.
Oh, they didn't.
Right?
No, you want to start another battle.
That's another battle.
I know the recommendation was to eventually go forth a full-time position here, but this position going out to the end of the year.
It's a, it's a part-time position, it is a subcontract position, and it is included inside of that $50,000, so it's not above and beyond, it is included in the budget.
Be sure, we're not hiring, we're, we're hiring the HPD as a consultant, they're hiring Mrs. Angel, not us, so.
Right, so, there's no, there's no 401K, there's no benefits, nothing like that. They're going to invoice us for the, for the person, for the work that is being done, and that's the work that they have.
Right, and we'll issue a 1099 as if we're sending it to an independent contractor.
And they're doing exactly what they've, what they've highlighted here in their, in the proposal.
As, as one of the members of the, of our, of our subcommittee that, that deals with economic development, I, I can tell you that a great deal of thought, you know, went into this proposal, we had several meetings with the HPD. The HPD was a very obvious group for us to turn to when we, when we changed directions on what we wanted to do in terms of business development and the employment of professionals and to be able to do it. And to me, you know, a great deal of work and a great deal of effort was put in, you know, voluntarily by the members of the HPD meeting with us and then separately putting together proposals. Great deal of deliberation went on in, in our subcommittee meetings. Our, our plan had been to discuss this, you know, with some significance at, at our next work session. It turns out, we don't have a work session in September. We go straight to a regular meeting in September. I would encourage my colleagues to read this, this entire report and reach out to any member of the, the subcommittee on the, you know, our committee on the HPD, or reach out directly to the members of the HPD that are here today to talk about any of these concerns, because I, I think it's important that we, that we act, you know, that we act quickly on this. And I, you know, I. How would you feel about acting tonight? I mean, I feel comfortable with the proposal. We've met, you know, a number of times, and, you know, I think the proposal speaks for itself, it's thorough, it's within the budget, and, you know, we're already into, we're already into August, we'll be into September.
Is that the benefit of acting tonight as opposed to?
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what else we have to discuss, but that's my one view, so I would be in favor of moving forward tonight on this.
I would just, I would like to say that, I mean, I would be in favor of moving tonight. I mean, this is, I wasn't a commissioner when this was added to the budget, and we've been discussing it at length, your committee, and you put a lot of work into it, and it's great, but I mean, I think at some point, the money's already been budgeted, a former board already voted on the money being budgeted, I mean, we need to just move forward with this. I think the township's going to benefit from it, and, and a lot of work's already gone in, so let's just do it.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. I think, I think Mario, you should make the motion, right?
I can make the motion, but what might, what might be better is we can authorize, this board can authorize to begin this process, the most, before the, the next commissioner's meeting, if we put Gene to start, start to work right away, would be $2,400. So we could start that process, look over the whole plan, if there's any issues, and then we could, you know, we could vote on it at the next meeting, but we would start, start the clock right away.
But for the whole thing, the whole thing, it's the difference. Let's budget it. It's a good plan, budget it, just do it.
Is it, I haven't heard from Larry.
Can I, I was just going to say, if we could hear from council too.
Beginning of the year, we did put $75,000 aside for this type of project, 20, and then we, the board has decided we would use 25,000 of that money. But it's important also to note that.
Or that comprehensive plan.
That money goes away December 31st, when we start a whole new budget.
Yeah, so we need to.
And it's also important to note that the Public Works Department is coming upon the busiest time of the year.
Season.
So we have a lot of.
Starting, get a head start.
Limited amount of assistance that we can give the HPD during some of these initiatives. Plus, there's multiple other projects that we're in the process of doing as well, so.
And I did speak with council today, and, you know, about, yeah, no, I know, Kelly, yeah. I did speak with Jim, though. I spoke with Jim about, about this, and he was okay with everything on it, as well as he spoke to you about it.
Somebody got to make a motion, that's all.
Well, if, let me just, I just will make one point, and then let's consider the There's no restrictions on us voting on this in September, including looking back retroactively to work that's done in August.
Right.
This has not been discussed at a work session, and this is the entire public discussion we've had on this issue. I think it's obvious that members of this board, you know, are in favor of doing something like this, but I do think it isn't just ceremony, that we have serious discussions about this, that the public know we're discussing this, and the public get a chance to comment on that, as well as all the commissioners who may not have had much time to think about this. I do not believe there's anything that restricts the township manager in the next month to make his own discretionary calls on part of this stuff, because it will be well within his limits by law as to what he can spend without our approval. We can go back and ratify that in September unless something dramatically changes in, in the mood of people on this board, or, you know, in some other opportunity, and frankly, I don't expect some other opportunity to come up. So, you know, in the interest of, you know, maintaining the way we do things, which is we do try to introduce these things to the public and give the public a chance to consider it, and, and advise their, their own commissioners or other commissioners as to what they think about it, and knowing we're not really risking something like not being able to do a bond issue, or not being able to, you know, start construction on the, you know, on the police station, you know, I would be in favor of us having another discussion about this at our next meeting and voting on it at that next meeting. It has my recommendation, I'm a member of this, of this committee, and I know this committee's behind it, but I, I do think it is more than ceremony for us to go through this kind of exercise.
And, I mean, what you're saying is consistent with what Mario said, I mean, for whatever reason, I didn't get it till, till today, I, I'm sure it's, it's fine, but we typically either have a work session, or we have an opportunity through public for them to comment, and there's really, even though we have to open it up for public comment, there's really no opportunity. I'd rather we essentially do what Commissioner Holmes suggests, which is to, you know, allow the township manager his discretion and then formally vote on it in September, when everyone's had an opportunity, the public can comment if they, if they, you know, if they see fit, and then we're clearly open to, for.
Can I ask a question of the?
If I may, just the one project at Darby Road Medium Strip is, is beyond my authorization. I'm not obligated.
Can we just maybe ask somebody, maybe somebody could come up and just answer a couple of questions? In terms of what expenses you might expect to incur in the next month and the timing and what they're for, so we'll see if they're within his, his authorization.
I'll do my best, yes.
Okay.
I'm just going to bring up Don and Gene, who've worked thoroughly on this proposal as well, with regards to any of the light item monetary funds that, that might be allotted. I guess, Gene, you could probably answer what we could probably do if Larry has any discretion, and I did hear you, Larry, with regards to the, the medium, there is, from what we're understanding, there's, there's, he doesn't have authority to do that broad scope of a.
Would that be done in the next, would that, would you attempt to do that in the next month, or are you?
She's done a lot of legwork. I guess my only concern about the Darby Road Medium Strip pushing that off is that does require a lot of Public Works help to assemble it.
And now, if you're going to.
And fill the dirt, and they are going to get busy.
Yeah.
Come November, so.
I mean, is it late October or November when they start the leave schedule?
Late October.
This work gets collected in September.
So it has to be, and there's still a lot of vetting with that, like, I really want to be meeting with Larry and, and Mario and the committee to really look at the pricing and, and how the landscaping is going to work. For that particular project, it's, it's extensive, and it's a vision that we have, but I feel like there's still some work to be done to kind of tweak it and figure out what will work best for, for Public Works, and Larry and I had met with Mario a couple of months ago, and he liked the idea, but I feel like we need to sit down again and really start to place the orders and figure it out sooner rather than later because of the Public Works leave schedule.
But between now and September, we don't spend $18,000, it's all within Larry's discretion.
We won't spend more than $18,000 in the next month, right?
No.
Okay, so that's.
I'd rather you have to take your time and consider it. I completely concur with anybody who wants to have a public forum, we welcome the public's opinion on this. I feel like that the residents would fully be in, in favor of this, and that with regards to the big project, that is the biggest scope, and the most eye-catching part of it, if you get a chance to read through it. It's going to have the most dramatic eye-catching effect coming in with traffic. Right now, if you know where it is, it's like just, just bare kind of leg space with just that medium that doesn't have anything go, so we're hoping to like get moving on that, but we could certainly, it sounds like we can probably hold off till September on.
So then it's.
No, no, wait a second, wait a second.
Understanding is that we were, the township manager will work with HPD, will begin moving forward.
Right.
And not to exceed the $18,000 mark.
Well, we won't.
And next month, we will come back and formalize the, and formalize the resolution.
So we can start, you can start moving forward on, on things that you need, Larry can authorize all that stuff, Larry Gentile, and then move, we can move forward. I'd, I'd be fine with that.
HPD also got a, a grant from the MKM Foundation, and so we'll be able to do the Manoa planters probably with that money, we could start with that too at the same time.
Okay.
Mrs. Angel, you will be the point person for this, right? Okay, I just wanted.
Good.
Right, I got you.
She'd be hired.
Right, so, okay.
Okay.
I know there's, I know there's president, vice president, I'll take that away, but I got you, you'll be the point person for this.
Okay, so.
In this application.
So we're, I guess we're good, we don't need to do anything, and we'll just have, wait till the next commissioner's meeting to ratify it, but we can go ahead and start moving.
Terms of hiring Gene. And in the meanwhile, I think we should make this proposal, I don't think there's anything.
No, no, we're going to put it online.
Confident, we'll make this available to the public.
Yeah, here's your clean copy.
On the webs, yes, on the webs.
Easy access. Mr. Calhoun, can I interject, is there, just with regards to that meeting, I imagine you'd want us to be there for any other further questions as well.
Yes, but I mean, as far as, you know, what, going to.
And we'll set it early.
Mr. Gentile's office and everything over and over.
Yeah, we'll make it first on the agenda, so.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Thank you very much.
Do gentlemen have any other? No, that's it.
No, I mean.
Okay, no question, thank you, thanks very much. Thank you, and thank you for the.
Thank you, guys.
Proposal.
Okay, also on our new business, Mr. Lewis, you want to speak about Pamir?
Yes, we've had a longstanding legal issue, John Williams and Ellen DeLea, 730 Pamir Road, filed suit against the township, and it's been a matter of discussion within executive session with this board over the last six or seven months, and we're recommending that we, we settle this case out of court and stop the unnecessary spending of legal fees, and I don't know whether our solicitor would like to maybe spend a minute just explaining the basis of the suit and why it makes sense to try to move forward.
No problem. So this suit was brought in 2015 by Dr. Williams and Dr. DeLea, they are the owners of 730 Pamir Road in Havertown, Delaware County. The suit was relating to the ownership of that street, and as Commissioner Lewis has said, the commissioners and Dr. Williams and Dr. DeLea have been working to try to settle this lawsuit out of court. There is a looming trial date of August 22nd, 2016, and right now, there is a proposed settlement between the parties that I will defer to Mr. Lewis.
So I have, I have three motions, and the first motion would be, I moved to.
Can I ask?
I'm sorry.
Please, pardon me, when, how many were you missing here? Just two? Okay, and let's move forward.
What, you want to wait, or?
Well, I just wanted, we're going to make a motion, I, I think the other gentleman should be in the room.
Sure, I'm happy to wait.
Hey, Justin.
Yeah, I would do it, yeah.
Okay. brought by John Williams and Ellen DeLea against the township of Havertown, which is scheduled for trial on August 22nd, 2016, on tonight's agenda. So that in effect would give us the ability to act on this tonight, this motion.
Second.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor.
Wait, I was... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded it, I'm sorry?
I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, give it to Larry, please. He's on a roll.
Okay.
The second motion is I moved to authorize our solicitor to resolve the matter brought by John Williams and Ellen DeLea against the township of Havertford, Delaware County Court of Common Police, case number 2015-004862, under the following terms. Number one, establishing resident-only parking on the west side of Pamir Road from Old Buck to Buck Lane. Number two, establishing parking of vehicles at all times prohibited on the east side of Pamir Road from Old Buck Road to Buck Lane. And number three, authorizing the construction of two speed humps by the township on Pamir Road in accordance with the more detailed written settlement agreement executed between the parties, which contains a mutual general release.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva.
Aye.
Comment or question on, no, we'll take a roll on this one.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
All right, nobody, okay. Take the roll on it, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
The final motion would be, and this would be the first reading, I move to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-19 authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Establish sticker-only parking sign, west side of Pamir Road from Old Buck Road to Buck Lane. Establish parking of vehicles prohibited at all times, east side of Pamir Road from Old Buck Road to Buck Lane. And this is, the second reading is contingent upon the submission of a petition indicating that at least 70% of the homeowners on the block approve of these measures.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner D'Amelio and verifying that this is P-19-2016, first reading for traffic. Comment, question? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Is there anything further under new business? There being none under other business? Commissioner D'Amelio? Well, I just wanna thank Andy Lewis. I know he worked very hard on that. He handled it with professionalism and his communication skills with the residents, there was a great job, Andy.
Thank you. Thanks for the boards and for all these time-consuming meetings, executive sessions.
It's okay, it's part of governing, right?
We saved the taxpayers a few dollars.
There's gonna be a first word meeting with my constituents on Wednesday, September 21st, that's at 7 o'clock at Manoa Firehouse. I had asked the member of the Alliance Group, oh God, what, sorry?
HADA.
HADA. To come and hopefully they will. I invited them and it'd be nice to have them there. I'll reach out to them again to see if they can come. On Sunday, there's a Thin Blue Line Rally for the police officers in our community and that's, that's on Sunday from, I believe, 4:00 to 6:00 PM on Baltimore Pike. Encourage everyone to attend, to show all the police how much we support them and thank them for the job they do every day, all of our emergency services really, even our volunteer firefighters. I think volunteer firefighters will be there in attendance as well, so I wanna thank them and hopefully everyone can attend that. The other thing is with September coming and people going back to work and school, I've already had residents ask me, Chief, I know that John's not here today, but to remind the police if they could be very active in that area, as soon as school starts and, you know, people are back to work, back from their vacations, they're blocking the box and they can't get in and they're running through red lights there on the Pike and it becomes rather difficult, so I promised them before our September meeting that I would bring it up. So thank you and your staff if they can get on that. And are we, Larry left?
He's not for good.
He's...
Here he is.
Not yet. Larry, any other improvements for the block in the box on Westchester Pike coming up? Do you know?
We did, two intersections are gonna be doing some line painting in the near future as well.
Good, I was just telling the folks about September 21st, our meeting, but some of the residents have already reached out to me, Larry, about asking the police if they could be active in that area once school starts and people come back from vacation and they're going to work and school. So that's it, so I have...
August 21st. I'm sorry. Your meeting's August 21st?
No, September 21st. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McCloskey?
Sure. There's August 27th, the final concert in the park thrown by Kelly Music for Life is being held at Merwood Park. You know, I know Commissioner Oliva and others have attended some of them in various parks throughout the township, but it's really a nice night and hopefully people can attend. It's August 27th, Saturday, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Siegel?
Two things. First, the Havertford Music Festival will be on Saturday, September 10th, from noon to 9:30 PM at Eagle and Darby Roads. You can go to their website at havertfordmusicfestival.org. It supports our civic organization, so it's an important thing. The other is, I wanna just thank the members of the community who came out for the National Night Out that was at Giant, I guess, last week. It was an opportunity to meet with law enforcement, emergency medical services and others and get to know them in a way that you don't always, and I commend them for their arranging it and the extent of it and for all the, it was a very well-attended event, so thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up on some comments that both Steve and Jimmy made at the last meeting. Larry, you weren't here, but talking about the job that the Public Works Department has done over the course of the last couple of months involving the storms and the wonderful job they've done. And, you know, people sometimes are quick to be critical, but it's nice to get some accolades every now and then. I wanna also read a letter, if I could, that I received from a constituent with regard to the Public Works Department, which I'd hope that you'd share with Doc and Dory as well. It says, "Less than 24 hours since I reported the street light issue had fallen in doubt, the Public Works Department replaced the bulb and the light is now working normally. It is certainly not reasonable to expect that the Public Works Department can respond to every request so quickly, but from my experience as a 35-year resident, I've come to realize that a quick response to a public safety issue is not the exception, but the norm. Again, please convey my thanks to the Public Works Department in a time when budgets and resources may be stretched to the breaking point. The quality and level of work done on a daily basis by our township employees reassures this taxpayer that tax money's are wisely spent. Kudos to the men and women in the Public Works Department." It's on by John Ferrier, and if you could share that with Doc, appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Holmes?
Oh, thank you. President Connell, just two things. One, on July 19th, after our last meeting, the YMCA invited a number of donors and then other folks in the township that are very important to the success of the Y, that included all of us here on this board and various township personnel. A few of the commissioners were able to make that breakfast and at that breakfast, we met cancer survivors who are the beneficiaries of an extraordinary program that the YMCA is putting on for, for people going through chemotherapy and other cancer treatment. And we also got to meet the people who are the beneficiaries of the YMCA's charitable arm, and that is the folks who get either free memberships or highly discounted memberships, depending on their economic circumstances, that enable single parents to be able to have a place for their kids to, you know, to be able to go to the gym and swim and, you know, learn how to swim. And it's, and it's really an extraordinary, an extraordinary institution and I think the, they've taken some punches from this board in the past, but also gotten a lot of support from this board. And I just wish that we could understand what, what a terrific charitable organization the YMCA is, both nationwide and here in our community. And if you got a chance to meet in person the cancer survivors who lives are really changed because of the program the Y puts on for them, and if you could meet these folks who've gone through painful divorces or terrible family situations and the YMCA provides an opportunity for their kids to be able to enjoy camps or recreation, then we might understand that it's not just another Bally's and it's not just another health club, but it's a really important partner in our township. The second point I wanted to make is a point that came up in conversations with our township finance director today, and that was the question about what would it cost, what will it cost this bond issue? People in this, the individuals in this, in this township for us to borrow the money to be able to build these buildings. And Ms. Cuthbertson said two things, that the median impact would be $21 and the average impact would be 25, not just for folks who aren't as into math as I am. By the median, it means that half of the people in the township will pay $21 or less and half of the people in the township will pay $21 or more. The price of a case of Stella Artois is about $28 right now at Ardmore Park Beverage. So Deputy Hagan, I'm sorry John's not here to hear this, but you are. I'd gladly give up a case of imported beer once a year so that you guys can finally operate in a 21st century building as well as our extraordinarily overworked and very successful township personnel. So I appreciate that the question was asked about how much it cost and I'm very glad that the answer was what the answer was. So, thank you for your work and, and that is all I have. And I, one more thing, thank you to my colleagues for the extraordinary honor they did for my son and my family today. Thank you.
Commissioner McGarrett?
Yes, I would like to say first of all to Deputy Chief Hagan and Lieutenant Kelly and Commissioner Siegel, Connell and D'Amelio and myself, we were all down there at Giant and Lowe's to see the police, the fire apparatus and the EMTs. It was a wonderful night, the Canines put on quite a show.
Kevin was there, Jimmy.
Who?
Kevin too.
Were you there, Kev?
Yeah, he was there.
I'm sorry, Kev, I missed Kevin.
Me too.
We'll do that again, Kevin was there, Kevin McCloskey, I'm sorry.
One getting bit by the dogs.
So it was a good night out, it was hot and it was really...
You should've saw the dogs, Larry, you did a great job.
I said the dogs did a great job?
They did, Jimmy. What a show they put on.
And the other thing I wanna also mention is the Alliance Group that was here last week, I gotta say that a lot of kudos goes out to Chris Connell. I know he worked hard on getting those people here. I thought it was...
McCloskey.
And McCloskey, oh, they are, Kevin also.
I brought her up and Commissioner...
He always leaves Kevin out.
I'm not taking on you here, Kev, I didn't, but...
Like an underground hero of his town.
Kudos to Mr. Connell and Mr. McCloskey for bringing these people here. It was a good night, they made their point and hopefully a lot of people are, you know, taking their advice and following up with them, so that's all I have.
He has more here than James.
Mr. Wexler?
I'd just like to, on behalf of the Hilltop Civic Association, they're having their annual outdoor movie event Saturday, August 27th at Steel Field. It's a fun night. Bring a blanket or chair and get ready for a great night, snacks and drinks and other treats will be available. You can start claiming your area at 7:45 and the film begins at sundown. It's a great event, it's one of the favorite nights of the Hilltop Civic Association and do a great job for $10 of membership fees dues a year. It's a great organization. Also like to thank the Bonner Fire Company that night. They're gonna provide emergency lighting at the end of the show for everybody to get off the field safely and get back in their cars and get ready to go back to school for the kids that week. That's all I have.
Movie of surprise or...
No, the movie's Disney's Pixar Inside Out, so it's a great family movie, so.
Watch it back.
It's very good. I have kids that age.
Bring your kids, yeah.
Commissioner Oliva?
Yeah, I have two things, just like everybody else. One is I'd like to thank this board for the support of our Economic Development Committee and this plan for, for economic development Havertford Township. I do appreciate your support on that and I also wanted to recognize the eight U girls softball team at Hilltop, who, being the first ever state champs in softball in Hilltop history, so congratulations to those guys.
Excellent, good job.
Yeah, we'll be recognizing them next month, but I just wanted to pass that along.
Okay, write that down?
Yeah, write it down now so you don't forget it.
Okay.
How glorious.
I too would like to thank very, Commissioner McCloskey, thank you for getting out of here and everything and it is very important to me that they did show up because of my closeness to some people who did pass. And if anybody has an opportunity to have them at your local constituents' meeting, please, please do so and pass the word and I'm happy that we are now an Alliance member with them. Schools will be open when we get back in September, September 5th. There will not be a work session because it is Labor Day. We will convene again in September 12th to, which is our regular meeting at 7 o'clock here. National Night Out, thank you very, very much, Deputy, splendid job, absolutely a splendid, splendid job done by all. I wanna give also a thank to Penfield Civic Association who did a tremendous job in the new Penfield Civic Association, a new younger group, younger families have now accepted the torch and who are doing a fantastic job with their new civic association. They did super at the Grange Field, 4th of July. I wanna thank my colleagues also for their support with this storm winter management and moving forward. Kelly Hayes, Esquire, thank you very much for sitting in for us tonight as counsel. And does anybody have anything else for the betterment of the municipality, the community?
Yes, I do. I have one thing that I, that I forgot was this IRS phone scam. Just wanted to make everyone aware. I've, you know, we've sent out emails on this before and talked about it, but it seems to be clicking up a little bit right now.
Oh, it's brutal. I got four phone calls today, four.
Yeah, so if, if the IRS calls you, it's probably a scam. Just contact the police right away and ask them to call you back and you won't get a phone call back. So don't give any personal information at all, just hang up the phone and, and call the police right away.
Can I just bring up something about that?
The IRS will not contact you over the telephone.
Yeah, they'll send a letter to you.
Yeah, they'll send you by certified mail, you'll get, you'll get any contact. They will not contact you by telephone.
How much of a scam this is, I, when I took, I took a call today from them and I asked them, they told me I had a $5,000 debt to the government. I said, "How do I pay that back?" And they said, "Well, are you on your cellphone?" I said, "No." They said, "Go to your cellphone, call us, go to either Rite Aid or CVS." They wanted me to buy Apple, this is, this is no joke, Apple cards.
Yeah, the iTunes cards, yeah.
$5,000 worth? I mean, wow. I didn't even know they sold that many. What's the highest they go, 500? I guess.
I guess you gotta, you gotta buy 10 500 ones.
$500, I mean, so that's how much of a scam it is, but what I cannot understand for the life of me, I forgot I was gonna bring this up too, Maria, how are they getting our phone numbers? How is this government allowing, the federal government allowing that to continue? Where residents, I've had residents call me about this.
Goes down to the next number, click, click, click.
But how are they doing? Where are they...
It's randomly done, it's just a sequence.
I gave them false names.
Put in 10 numbers and I guarantee someone's gonna answer, it doesn't matter.
But I don't think so. No, 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 it's not true because I tested this, you know me, right Larry? Larry's looking at me like, this guy really did it?
I'm waiting, yeah.
No, Larry, I actually tested it, right? And I gave them a false name, I gave them a name of somebody I knew.
You gave my name?
No, I thought about it though. I did, I did think about it.
My name's Larry Holmes, but I couldn't remember your wife's name.
Yeah.
So he said to me, okay, who is...
It wouldn't matter.
Who is this person, who was that? He had the names of those people, the person I, the name I gave, he had their names. He knew their names. So it's not a random number, they're getting names and phone numbers. How is this continuing? I, I'm baffled by it.
I won't do it again, I promise.
I'm sorry?
I won't do it again, I promise.
Deputy Chief, I think we can safely assume that you would not suggest that any other[1761.26]
that you would not suggest that any other residents do what Steve did, and they just hang up right away, right?
Well, no, no, I
Yes, of course.
It's just to hang up on them.
It's kind of fun to have fun with them, though.
Yeah, honestly, sometimes it's fun to play with them.
I do it because, here's how I look at it, Deputy. If I'm keeping them on the phone, they're not calling another senior, and they're not getting the seniors money, and they know that. They get pretty angry. They curse at you, they yell at you. You know, they get pretty angry because you just wasted their time. But I just can't figure out, I mean, what can we do to get our government to stop that? Is it Verizon, are they getting the numbers from Verizon? Or who's selling them our numbers?
They may be buying a list. I mean, there's commercial lists available that they can get, but the, the whole thing is, we do report those numbers, we do forward them to the IRS data bank so they have those numbers. But a lot of these phone calls are being originated either from overseas and other islands or along those lines, too. They're not necessarily being done in the United States.
Oh, I know they're not. You could tell.
But we do take the reports and we forward everything to the IRS and let them follow up on it. Whether they're following up on it, I can't answer that, but what we recommend is immediately hang up on them. Don't give any pertinent information, and if you want to keep them on the phone, that's up to you.
Oh, I love doing that.
And I personally do it, too. I enjoy it.
I enjoy it.
How do they, how are they able to, I think their, their number shows up on your phone. So how are they, if you call that number back?
Called spoofing?
It's disconnected, or basically disconnected.
Spoofing, there's services out there that you can pay for to actually, I could put your phone number in and pretend I'm you calling from a number. So that's what they're doing. They're actually what's called spoofing phone numbers.
But if you call the number back, it says it's disconnected, or
Well, they, oh, no, they answer some of them. Sometimes they do.
And that number's in service for a brief time, so they're, they're collecting that phone call immediately in, and then maybe about 15, 20 minutes later, if you don't call it back immediately, it's going to disconnect.
Different number.
How, I can't give you an educated answer how they're doing that, but
But can our, can our government, can our senators give us some answer? I mean, can they stop this? Is there any way to stop? I mean, I know of a person who gave money, I, I'm telling you, I know of a person who gave money, there's another scam equal to that, whereas they call, they know who your family members are, and they had this young person call saying he was this grandson, he was in an island or whatever, he got in trouble, and the bail is $3,000, and he doesn't have it. The grandfather sends the $3,000 bill overseas. Then they call him up, he calls back, and he needs more money, something happened, he sends another $3,000, until we realize something's wrong.
A lot of times, and I'm going to give you an example, there was a woman that lived over on Colfax that actually the people were calling from Jamaica constantly. There's nothing that we can do, and really, there's nothing that the FBI or anyone else, we did get the FBI involved in that, because they actually took that woman to cleaners, and she lost everything. And we got them involved, and they were trying to follow up on it, and we're very limited, and if they're operating from outside the United States, it's very hard to do something about.
And people need to be aware of a couple of things. You don't click on anything in an email if you don't know that it's a legitimate known source. It can install spyware that'll copy and take all of your addresses, which is how they often get it.